In this meeting. I apologize, I'm fighting a sore throat and a cough, so if I start coughing or have a cough up my mouth, I apologize if you can't understand me. All right. Roll call, please. Kimberly, do you have anything to report from the closed session?
The council convened in closed session for two items regarding the conference with real property negotiators and also a conference with legal counsel and was received direction from the city council, but there is no reportable action.
Thank you. Roll call, meeting's ordered, please. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Lamson. Here. Please stand for the silent prayer, and I'm going to have New Officer Mello lead us in the flag salute after the bell rings.
Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Donna, would you replay the statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T/Universe Cable System. Meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, February 22nd at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, February 23rd at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website, and a DVD copy is available for check out at any library branch.
Thank you. Are there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions? No? Okay.
Actually, is that where pull consent item?
Yes, okay.
J. 3 and 5.
J. 3 and 5. And I would like to pull consent, too. And if it's all right with the council, after the oath of office presentation, I'd like to have public comment before Claire's report. Is that okay with council? Okay. So we have a presentation. Chief Stockman?
Right in the middle. So the first line is the same thing I continually say, is that we're constantly looking for great talent, police officers, to represent this city. And we lucked out on this one, we have a Galtonian, born and raised, graduate of Galt High, and then following high school, did you become a diesel mechanic or repair guy before you went in the service?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so he's a diesel repair guy, and then he spent the last five years in the United States Army, so thank you for your service. Upon graduating, went to Delta College and just recently graduated the academy on the 14th and started with us on the 15th. So gives me great pleasure to introduce our newest officer, Nick Mello. And now he's going to get sworn in, and then he's going to say a few words and introduce everybody that he brought here.
Hi, Nicholas Kenneth Mello.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I'm an employee.
As I'm an employee.
For the City of Galt.
For the City of Galt.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
By the position of.
Of the position of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Okay, well, thank you all for coming, and thanks to everybody who's watching. I'd like to introduce my family, first and foremost, my mom, Janelle Mayo, my grandmother, Virginia Bauer, my Aunt Dana, of course, Paige, my girlfriend, my dad, Neil, and I just want to say thank you all very much. I've worked really, it's been about 10 years for me to actually get to this point, then I finally made it, so I'm really happy to be here. And I want to thank Paige the most, who's helped me through all these years of the Army and of the academy so far. She's really helped me a lot, I just want to say thank you.
Well, congratulations and welcome. We understand it's been a long, long journey, a little emotional, and can't wait to see you out there on the streets. All right, public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located in the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
Thank you. Can I please call Ruben Epstein to the podium? Wants to talk about handicapped parking.
Yeah, my name is Ruben Epstein. I've lived in Galt for over 40 years now, and I just have a question. My wife has a handicap plaque for her car, and I drive a lot, I drive her a lot, and we see a lot of different handicap parking spaces in Galt. And apparently, all of them have changed the minimum fine from $250 to $400. And I looked up on the internet, and I asked questions in different places, and I never could find out who does this, where does the money go, why did it change? And all the other handicap spots that we get to, it apparently still says $250. So is Galt that special that we have to charge more? I realize it's important to keep other cars that don't belong there out of handicap spots, but it just seems strange that more or less, all of a sudden, the rates have gone up in Galt. I don't know if anybody here knows why, but it just seems curious to me. Oh, and I noticed the signs in the parking lot here have no minimum fine.
So council would like us to get back in with an answer, we can do so?
Yeah.
We don't have an answer.
I assume it was the DMV, but.
Yeah, we'll get back to the council.
Is that all right? Can we do some research and get back to you? On what's, who changed it and who put those laws in?
I cannot hear.
Can we do some research and get back to you?
Yes.
With the information? Okay.
Yeah, there may be other people in Galt who are curious, too. I don't know. But I think of weird things, and this is one of them.
Okay. Can you tell me where some of the signs are that you've noticed? The new signs?
The basic signs are all the same. There's an add-on plaque that just says minimum fine in Galt, it says $400 now, and other places, it says $250. And as far as I can remember, the signs in Galt used to say $250. And as I say, I couldn't find anything online that said who sets the fee. Apparently it's collected down at court, but no information as to where the money goes or how it's divided or anything else.
Thank you. I am under the impression that it's the Department of Motor Vehicles, because that's where you get your placard from, but we're going to do some research and get that information for you.
Okay, thank you. My number's on the form.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Ruben.
All right, Jean, would you like to introduce Ms. Tyson?
Good. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our Long Range Financial Plan. This is a plan that staff's been working on for probably a little over a year now. It was addressed in last year's strategic plan. It's one of our items, being physically sustainable. We've had a couple different staff working on it, and Matt's done an amazing job of putting this together, so it's a tool that, you know, I think it's going to be used by the council every time we talk about budget and budget items. I think this is something that we're going to want to, you know, bring up, you know, at each of those meetings when we discuss the budget, to kind of see where we are. And let me have Claire and Matt walk you through this and answer questions.
All right, thank you, Jean. Good evening, Mayor Lamson and council members. Tonight, we're going to go over the Long Range Financial Plan. This presentation will be made available on the public website after the meeting, so it'll be all available to everyone. So what we're going to go over this evening is what is a Long Range Financial Plan? We're going to go over what funds are included in this particular plan, the data elements used to develop it, its financial model, so there's a lot of data, what assumptions we're using that are helping drive the results. The results will be in certain kinds of reports that we'll present to you tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about potential enhancements and challenges. This is a forecasting model, so those elements will be important. So let me start by talking just kind of in general terms. As Jean said, this is the Long Range Financial Plan. It is really a tool for you. It is to aid in decision-making. It's a forecasting model, so it's going to take financial data and forecast it out for a period of time. It's complex, I can't say that enough, it's very complex. It's dynamic, which means it's going to change frequently. It is based on an Excel model. The biggest changes that'll be implemented in this plan over time will be council decisions. So the financial impact of the decisions you make are really what we're trying to depict in this model. Decisions you make today, how does that impact the financial status going forward into the future? We're really trying to focus on the fund balance, since that's kind of your savings account, and how that might look. We're going to use estimates on revenues and expenditures. We're going to use those for the general fund and any fund that impacts the general fund. So if there's any contributions being made to another fund, they're going to be in this model. This particular model calculates at least four years' projection. We have a two-year budgeting model, so, you know, you'll see as we go through how that looks. This particular plan currently includes the general fund, Parks and Rec Fund, and Northeast Area Lighting and Landscaping District. Those are the funds that are currently in deficit that the general fund will contribute towards. We are tracking other funds, so as other funds become in the same situation where they need assistance from general fund, they would be incorporated into this. So this is a, you've seen this map before. This is the lighting and landscape district, the northeast, well, this is all of them. The yellow is the northeast, which is the substantial area of the city. The purple is the west side, and then the blue is the District 3. The yellow district is, and yellow and purple were originated in 1990, so pre Prop 218, so they have no escalator on them, and that's why the yellow section is already impacting general fund. We anticipate, without any other changes, the west or purple area will impact general fund eventually. The blue, the third district, District 3, is, it has an escalator in it, so hopefully it'll be able to support itself and the services provided for a while. The white area is, there is no district, so the people and the businesses in that area, the people in that area, they're not contributing to those services in any way. So that's that map. Now we're going to talk a little bit about the model itself, so I'm going to introduce Matt Boring. He is the financial analyst here for the City of Galt. He's spent a lot of time on this, it's very detailed, and I'm going to let him kind of explain it to you. I also wanted to mention that I do have copies of this presentation for anybody who would like it.
All right, good evening. I have to go over all the fun number stuff. So for data, the overview, we have three main types of data that we use. We use three years of actuals to show historical trends. We currently have two years of budget, so we have those in the middle. And then we use our last year's budget and assumptions to project four years in this case, depending on where we're at in the budget cycle, it could be five years of projections in the future. Our actuals are taken from our final revenue and expenditure reports, so those are the audited numbers for those fiscal years. And we just directly export data from our accounting software and into the plan. For the budget figures, we use those when we have those, so those are known numbers that we project using those fiscal years. And those consist of the original appropriations when budget adopts the, or when council adopts the budget, any supplemental appropriations approved by council throughout the year. And in this case, there's a few items where a council has approved items without a supplemental appropriation with the expectation of addressing them in the midterm budget, so, for example, the GPOA MOU and a few other personnel salary changes, so we plug those numbers into the plan. And then we move on to the projections, and that's where we take the prior year, so in this example, we're showing fiscal year '21, so we start with the fiscal year '20 budget. We apply the assumptions for that year, and that gives us the projection. And our assumptions can be either growth rates or fixed dollar amounts, and those can come from external sources. So, for example, like property taxes, we get information from the county. It could be historical trends, which we use for transient occupancy tax, and an annual escalator like we use for our supplies budgets. And so we're going to go through some of our revenue assumptions. So for property tax, we have a 4% growth rate, and these are the average rates applied throughout the model. So each fiscal year has its own area for us to insert, so we could project, you know, 4% one year, 2% the next, so there's a lot of flexibility in that. So for the current version, we have 4% for property tax, 3% for property transfer tax, we have 2% for sales tax, with an additional $212,000 estimate added to fiscal year '21 for new businesses that we plan on opening by then. We have a 2% growth rate for franchise fees and a 2% growth for business licenses. We also have 2% for transient occupancy tax, with an additional $158,000 added to fiscal year '21. We have a 2.5% growth rate for interest, and for building and planning fees and police fees, those are both estimated to grow at 3%. And other general revenues are 2%, and those are mainly our minor revenues that didn't warrant their own assumption. And we also have the firing range rents added to that category for $270,000 in fiscal year '21. And then we have a few fund-specific assumptions, so Parks and Rec Fund, they have the Galt Market, which has a 0% growth rate, so we're estimating that to remain flat throughout the model. Facility rentals are expected to grow at 1%, and our recreation fees are also estimated to grow at 1%. And then, as Claire mentioned earlier, there's no escalator to the assessments in the Northeast Area Lighting and Landscaping District, so that's also flat throughout the plan. And so here's an example of how the model calculates the assumptions. So in this case, we're starting with, we're going to use sales tax, so our fiscal year '20 budget is $2,441,000, and then we apply the fiscal year '21 growth rate of 1.98%, and that calculates $2.489 million. And then, in this example, we also have an $80,000 fixed amount estimated for that fiscal year, so our total estimate is $2.569 million. And then, when it goes to fiscal year '21, we take the $2.569 million, multiply it by the 2% growth rate to get the $2.62 million, and that's our estimate for fiscal year '22. And so the plan goes through each revenue and expenditure line item in the plan and performs that calculation. And then we move on to our expenditure assumptions, so salaries, we have 0.56%, and that's based on the current salary increases built into our MOUs, and then assuming that they're flat after that, so when you average it out over the life of the plan, it's, you get that rate.
If we go back real quick to the previous ones, our front houses in '21 and '22.
Oh, the, the numbers didn't print on the handout. Yeah, there's, it printed, there's little white tabs, so you can walk through it, and so, I'll, the one we put on the website, I'll remove those, so you can see the full example.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh huh. So we talked about salaries, so we projected 2% vacancy savings, so when we budget for the fiscal year, we budget for all positions to be filled, and that doesn't happen, so we kind of took a safe historical average and just assumed that 2% of our salaries budgets won't be spent. We project medical insurance to grow at 5%. And we move on to pensions, so the safety and miscellaneous rates here, those are for the employees' share of the pension costs, so the unfunded liabilities are also included in the model, but CalPERS gives us those fixed dollar amounts in the actuarial assumptions, so those are plugged directly into the model. Our operating costs are projected to grow at 3% and capital projects at 1%. And then we just want to cover items that aren't included in the assumptions. Like we said, for personnel costs, we're projecting those to remain flat after our current MOUs expire. It also doesn't include any adjustments that'll be made in the upcoming midterm budget process, so once we go through that, we can incorporate those, but the version today doesn't include any, any changes that aren't presented in the assumptions. And then future council policy changes, so those will impact the model and be updated when those are made. So then we move on to reports for the funds. So this shows the annual activity projected for the general fund. The green line shows revenues, the red line shows expenditures, and then fiscal year '19 shows a large increase, and that's due to moving from actual information to budget information, so fiscal year '19 includes encumbrance carryforwards that weren't spent in fiscal year '18, and also projecting for all positions to be funded throughout the year. And then I just wanted to highlight where we use the projections to plan for the future in fiscal year '21 and beyond. So in this chart, it's somewhere around fiscal year '21, our revenues exceed expenditures for the general fund. And then when we look at reserves, you can see in those fiscal years, our overall reserves increase. So the reserve chart shows our economic uncertainty reserve in green, and in fiscal year '17, that's when we have our new policies, that's why that green bar decreases in that year. The yellow amounts are available fund balance, and the blue items are other reserves, and those are mainly non-spendable items like inventory. Then we move to Parks and Recreation, so in this fund, in the actuals, they include contribution from the general fund to balance the fund, and then in the projections, we don't show that, so you can see where the expenditures for the fund exceed revenues, and the blue line on this one shows the fund balance. So beginning in fiscal year '19, it steadily decreases, showing the negative fund balance that's cumulative throughout the plan. And then we move to the Northeast Area Lighting and Landscaping District, and it's the same format as the Parks and Rec Fund. And then in this one, in fiscal year '18, it didn't have the contribution to balance the fund, so its negative fund balance begins in '18 and progresses throughout the plan. And then we combine those three funds together, so we show the revenues and expenditures for the general fund, the Parks and Recreation Fund, and the Northeast Area Lighting and Landscaping District. And when you combine them all together, the expenditures exceed revenues. And then we switch back to the general fund-style reserves, so you can see, we draw down the available fund balance to begin with, and then in fiscal years '20 through '23, we're spending down the economic uncertainty reserve, and fiscal year '24 has a negative combined fund balance. But we are trying to find creative solutions to solve the gap between revenues and expenditures. So we've identified some potential enhancements that aren't included in the plan, but they're things staff's working towards right now. So we have the electronic billboard, planned new businesses, hotel additions that'll increase the TOT tax, so the total identified here is $357,000. So we created another version of the plan to add these to show their impact. So even with those items, our expenditures still exceed revenues. But when we go to enhancements, it delays when we start eating into the economic reserve until fiscal year '21, and then we still have positive fund balance in fiscal year '24. But we've also identified some challenges from the prior year budget, including police vehicles, other city vehicles, computer equipment and deferred maintenance, and these items totaled $627,000. And so we created another version that shows the revenue enhancements with potential challenges. And the main difference is the impact to the fund balance, so in this one, we begin spending the economic reserve in fiscal year '21 again, and then it has negative combined fund balance if we were to implement all of those challenges as well. And that was it. Do you have any questions about the plan?
The last graph you were just showing us, this pertains, this is all tied in with the lighting and landscape, am I correct?
Yeah, so this is the general fund, Parks and Rec, and the Northeast Area Lighting and Landscaping District, with the potential revenue enhancements and also challenges factored in.
The idea of showing three different kinds of scenarios, the first scenario was kind of your actual budget, the other two was going to show, you know, how this can be used as a tool. As revenue, you know, comes online, we can kind of plug that in, kind of see where, you know, what effect that has on the budget as we approve expenses, or if we have expenses that we, you know, need to address, you know, we can plug it into the, you know, financial plan and kind of see what impact that has, you know, long-term. So it's really a great tool, as the council, you know, works with the budget, looks at, you know, policy decisions.
So basically, Matthew, just for those who are watching, to kind of, and just to simplify it so we all understand. Basically, what it's showing is if we, the main challenge is obviously the lighting and landscape, so if we do nothing about that problem by 2026, actually, well, basically past 2022, I mean, if we did nothing to remedy that problem, this is showing the trend that's going to happen.
Yeah, so if I go back a few slides. Yeah, so if I go back a few slides to... So with the combined reserves, this is with our, what we currently have budgeted in fiscal year nineteen and twenty. So it doesn't take into account any midterm adjustments that we're going to have or expenditure savings that we may experience. And then based on the assumptions, this is what would happen if we continued.
And does that factor in the, the, like, the four percent property tax increase? And the two, all those percentages are all factored in, into this equation here?
Can you go back one more slide to the Light and Landscape District? Project that, that one right there. So that, that's the Northeast Area. And you can see the, um, uh, General Fund, you know, contribution, you know, what we're, we're making to that Light and Landscape District.
Right.
And that's just the Northeast Area.
Just trying to grasp my mind around, all factors vary, but the big factor here, the, the main thing is that the lighting and landscape, the two, the two districts that are, that are, don't have an escalator, that are going to be, those are, those are basically pulling us down. They're continuing to be an anchor on us, the budget.
Correct. Through the, the plan, we include the other lighting and landscape districts also to monitor those. So if we change assumptions or the budget changes, and those were to have a, a negative fund balance at some point, we would put them in, in the plan. So the other lighting and landscape district that doesn't have an escalator still has a positive fund balance through fiscal year twenty-fourteen in our plan. So it's not represented here. But it's the Parks and Rec Fund and the Lighting and Landscape District that have negative fund balances and receive contributions from the General Fund.
Oh, right. I know the Parks and Rec does, but that's never going to change, I don't think. But, so aside from lighting and landscape, what would be the second thing that's, that's really pulling the budget? That, that's negatively affecting our budget? What would be the next thing to address? Would it be the retirement stuff, or would it be? What would be the next?
It's services. You know, how much, what kind of services do you want to provide the community? You know, you know, our biggest cost right now is staff. And then, you know, what, what it costs to, you know, provide those different services.
Thanks.
So I guess my question is, what are the next steps? Obviously, we have a, it looks to be, you know, a structural deficiency in, in the economics for the community. I mean, revenues are less than expenditures. So I guess what I would like to see come forward are a list of suggestions on how we, you know, resolve that structural deficiency. Or at least a list of options, because I think we've got to evaluate what is going on with the, particularly the Northeast Lighting Landscape District, what alternatives we have there. I think, as the city manager points out, personnel cost is a huge one. I think that, you know, if, if we do nothing, all reserves will be gone in a matter of about, you know, four or five years, four years. So I think that we need to, you know, proactively approach what the solutions are. And at the same time, I think we have to be very cognizant of any expenditures that we are looking at in this community. Because right now, we don't have, at least from what I'm being told and what I see here, there's not a lot of latitude for expenditures. So I, I, I'm, would like to see, you know, a plan to address at least those, those issues. And in particular, the Lighting Landscape District and what alternatives are there.
Yeah, well, as you know, we're working on the Lighting Landscape District. And we've taken, I think, some steps economic, development-wise, trying to, you know, housing-wise, to, you know, kind of improve the economics of the community. I've come up with some good ideas. The billboard, you know, was hatched out of staff to kind of bring, you know, before the council to, you know, see if we can collect additional revenue for the O-six Fund. And all those, you know, take time.
Sure.
My, you know, hope, you know, in this presentation, and this presentation was originally designed to bring to the City Council to, at the introduction of our strategic plan meeting, to kind of set the stage, here's kind of where we're at with the city. Since that meeting got postponed, we're meeting on March eighth. We were ready, you know, with this plan, you know, made a decision to bring it before you. You know, let's start thinking about this.
I agree.
You know, I, I think this needs to be, you know, you know, a very focused discussion during our strategic plan meeting on, on what our options are. We're, you know, run pretty lean. You know, we don't have a lot of depth in, in a lot of our staff, in our departments. We have, you know, we're busy. There's a lot going on, you know, you know, through, through every department. And, and kind of seriously, you know, the next thing, like with the Light and Landscape Districts is, is service. You know, how, you know, what is the level of service that, you know, we as a community want to provide our, our residents? And what can we afford? And if we can't afford, you know, that level of service, then, you know, what are the options to, you know, provide that level of service? You know, I think that needs to be, you know, a discussion at, at our strategic plan meeting. And I think, you know, I'll work with staff and we'll come up with some other ideas. And we'll throw them all, all on the board. And council members, you come up with some ideas. I've asked for three to five kind of top priorities from, from each council member. We, you know, kind of get into that strategic plan process, you know, add to that, you know, some other ideas. I'll put them all together and get that out to the council. And we can start, you know, having that discussion on March eighth.
Matt, that was a great job. I mean, it, it puts in perspective a whole lot of things, you know? It's not the best picture. It's not, not the picture I'd like to see, but good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. I appreciate your work on this. This is very telling, I think. Just a couple of questions. When you, when you say that in the assumptions, the, either the revenue or the expenditure is going to go flat, is that because you've already projected out for a specific amount of time? And then averaged it out over that time? And I'll give you an example. One was, like, the MOUs with the employees. We're not saying today that in five years, we won't have any increase. What we're saying is, is based on the model, that's, that's what it looks like for the purposes of the model. Is that accurate?
So, so all that means is we, we put in the, the current increases in the MOU. And then the model just assumes that there are no increases afterward. It's not saying that you can't make changes or increases. That's just what we've projected in the model.
Right.
And that could be changed if we anticipate having something different.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to get that out there, because that, that kind of jumped out at me when you said that. And I went, oh, I know what you're getting at.
Yeah.
For the purposes of the presentation and the model, makes perfect sense.
And let me kind of add on to, if you mind, council member. Yeah, one of the things that gets city managers in trouble is over-projecting. And, you know, we've always been very conservative, you know, with our budget numbers. And even like with the, you know, billboard, it's a great idea. It has to go through a process. That hundred thousand is not in, in, you know, the, the projections that, you know, we first showed. Because we don't know if that's going to happen or not. If, you know, those numbers aren't a surety, it's not in, in that model. So it's kind of a true picture. And our assumptions, I think, are, are very good. We went back and forth on, you know, you know, and, you know, worked with, you know, all of our consultants, HDL and the, you know, sales tax and, and, you know, others, you know, to, you know, get to, you know, good assumptions. So I, I think we're pretty accurate, but not overly aggressive.
Okay. I, I had just a couple of more questions. I apologize. Under program revenues, when you're, you're doing the revenue assumptions, there's police fees for three percent. What, are those like towing fees and things like that, or?
I'd have to...
Slide eleven.
Yeah.
Right there. There you go.
I'd have to look at the detail. That's how it's grouped up in our, our plan.
Okay.
But those are General Fund fees that the police receives. I believe some of it's vehicle payment.
Probably tickets and other fees. We can get kind of a detail on that for the council.
Okay. And then, going back to the lighting and landscape districts. And I agree with Vice Mayor Farmer that that's, I mean, if we don't address that soon, that's going to be an issue. And certainly an issue in the Northeast Area, but, but also in the pink area. I don't know what we call that, whatever the pink area is called.
West Side.
West Side, yes. And then, and then certainly the white area. And so I, I don't like to look at these kinds of issues as, as just one part of the city or one area. Because I think we have a systemic issue with, with that whole process and where we're at with it. So, and I heard the city manager talk about, you know, coming up with ideas about service levels that we can afford. And I think the real key here is going to be, it's what service level the community expects. And then getting feedback on what the costs associated with those are. And you can project out, based, very similar to how you projected this financial plan out, what that will look like in a lighting and landscape district. Now, legally, you have districts, but I think we can't just look at districts, you know, we don't have that many. We have three. And then a, a whole area that isn't contributing at all. And so if we look at all three of it, all three of those, or four of those areas, and really pin down what the community expects for services in those areas, then, then I think we come up with a price tag that is attached to that. And if that's something the community wants to tackle, then the community wants to tackle that. If it isn't, then we have to figure out with Armando and, and, you know, Mark, what that looks like in terms of reduction of services, if that's what the community wants. But I think just putting our heads together isn't going to do it. I, I never claimed to be that bright. But, you know, we really need to reach out and start doing some active public outreach as it, as it relates to this. There are many people at home that just pay their bill. They don't even know they pay into a lighting and landscape district. And so what we, I, I believe, and, and we'll talk more about this at the strategic plan meeting, but I think we really need to tighten our belts up in the interim, really look at contracts, outside services contracts that we have, and, and see what we can do about negotiating those well when they come up. And I know we, we do, but really taking a look at that and then looking at what the community expects. So those were just my thoughts on, but thank you. Very, very well done.
I would just like to add on to Rich's comment, just real quickly. And basically, you know, I, he was kind of touching on this a little bit, but I want to kind of broaden it. You know, the lighting and landscape, obviously, you know, there's going to be some hard choices made on that. I, for one, I don't live in a lighting and landscape. I'm just outside of one of those. I actually think that Councilman Campion's the same way. So the people that are not in those, you know, to fix this issue, there's going to be some, some options put out there. And, and some of them are not going to be easy for the citizens to want to hear. But I think, I believe that it's going to be the city's duty, though, when we present certain options, that we, there has to be a give and a take. You know, we can't always go to citizens and say, this is how we're going to fix that. So we're going to need to, you know, make one large CFD, for example, where everybody's paying into it, which is one of the options that's being presented, without saying, but on the other hand, this is what we're going to do for the community. Because what the community sees from the outside of city government and is they see that we just spend, 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 and we use money for this and that, whatever. And they're like, well, that's not important to me. I don't, I didn't want to see money spent on this and that. And then we come to them saying, hey, we'd like you to chip in some more money. So I think it's going to be, it's going to be a deal, it's going to be a compromise. I think it's, we're going to have to show that we're doing our due diligence to live within our means before we go to the public and ask them to work with us in solving a bigger problem, which is the lighting and landscape. So I, I think it's important, because quality of life is a big deal to me. And I think quality of life to the citizens, one of those things that falls into that is seeing money go where the people like to see it. Like, they want to see their funds doing things, you know, at work. So I think it's going to be a compromise. It's important that we, we get input. And then if we come to a hard, you know, we come to our options of fixing this, and it's going to mean putting our hand out or having the public have to, you know, dig a little bit to fix this, that we have to be able to give them something back. On the other hand, I don't just mean good services on the lighting and landscape. I mean, the bigger picture. That's, so anyways, that's my two cents on adding on to what you said, Rich.
Claire, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you, everyone.
All right. Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Councilmember Sandu?
All right, on the regional board committees. I, last month, I went for California League of Cities. That's very good information. And especially that conference was good for all the new city council. We learned a lot. A lot of my fellow councilor member, we got together. The other thing, I went for last week, twenty twenty, lectured official, motor belt and transportation plan. And there was a lot of information. And Mark Clarkson, he was with me. And they said they can send more information to the department. So I think on March fifteenth, they can have like a pre, pre-application or something like. So department have more information on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to go? Councilwoman Campion?
Nothing. I have a meeting upcoming on Monday, Habitat Conservation Plan.
Councilmember Lozano?
I do have a couple of things. Attended the SACOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting. It's a small group of SACOG members that talk about policy and, ironically enough, innovation. One of the, the biggest things that came out of that was SACOG has been working for about a year on a dues increase for partner agencies. So apparently, and I've got some information about it, and, and this is what I've synthesized from it. SACOG hasn't done any dues increase since two thousand and three. The dues are used for items such as advocacy with the state legislature. And we do get a lot of info from SACOG on, on what's going on in the Capitol and what bills we need to keep an eye on. But they're looking at a, an increase over the next two years, it looks like. And I appreciate Ms. Tyson doing an analysis of those, of those options. And, and it, if, if there is going to be a dues increase, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable that if we do it over a couple of years, that it will be easier to manage for us and, and as we look forward to the budget. And so that's kind of the big topic that's going to happen this Thursday at the SACOG meeting. We went through the CAFR. There were no material deficiencies. It was an unmodified opinion on the CAFR for SACOG, which is good. And then we just talked about code of conduct. There's also Youth Leadership Academy. So if any of our youth down here in, in Galt want to participate in the SACOG Youth Leadership Academy, they've already started, but I have assurances that if we have anyone locally that wants to be a part of that, you talk about traffic issues, traffic mitigation issues, greenhouse, greenhouse gas issues, and things like that, and really get involved from the youth perspective. And it's an initiative that SACOG started last year, where they're really trying to get the youth input into their, into the processes. So it's, it's really a, a good, good, good program. And so there's about thirty-five that are involved now, and they meet quarterly. And so it's not a huge time commitment, but it's a great opportunity for our youth to, to be a part of that. And then, as Councilmember Sandu mentioned, the MTP SCS is coming. And then that's about it for, for SACOG things. And again, we're meeting on Thursday morning downtown. So that'll be the next meeting. And then we had the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. And actually SACOG came there and did a presentation on just road index and, and a bunch of things regionally that, that we're going to need to start to address here shortly. Our roads are in, in the region are in pretty bad repair. And those of you that live in Galt know that oftentimes, when you get onto a county road, it's even worse. And so Donna Totally made a good point about, you know, we're talking about regional averages, but SACOG and STA are really going to start pinning down what, what our index is for our roads individually so that we can address those, not in... roads individually, so that we can address those, not in isolation, but have the numbers so that we can actually take a look at what the county's index is as opposed to what the local cities are and, and try to work through some of that. And then I think lastly is just, I spoke with Mr. Clarkson at the STA meeting, and I wanted to kind of get together, I mentioned it, city manager today, get together a meeting where we can kind of bring back to the council what monies we've received through the SACOG process, whether it's Prop 1B money or local money, whatever that looks like, over like the last five years. Same with the Transit Authority, so that we know what we're working with. We've had recently an issue where I was aware of some money that came in, but through SACOG, and, and I used the word grant, and apparently it wasn't a grant, it was pass-through money from the state. And so I learned, ask if it's a grant, and then ask what kind of money it is. So anyhow, I think just if we get an idea of what we've had in the last five years or so, so that we can know where to go, and know, know what we have pending in terms of the monies that we need to spend.
Councilmember Lozano, would you like that as a presentation from staff or a pass-through memo, suffice to the council on that information?
Let's start with pass-through.
Okay.
Yeah. And I know it might be a lot of work, and so there's no urgency to it.
Okay, thank you.
You know, within the next couple of months, just so we have an idea of where to, where to kind of go from there.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Very busy. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Nothing to report, I know.
Most of my commissions were two weeks ago, and I have a three or four coming up in the next couple of weeks, so we'll report on those. Come out. All right. Information consent calendar. So can I get a motion for the meetings of the regular meeting, February 5th, 2019? Galt Public Safety Committee bylaws, adopt a resolution, amending the Galt Public Safety bylaws? And receiving file, no, I pulled that one.
I have three and five pulled, I don't have.
And I said, and I said two.
Did you say two?
Yeah, I did.
So you're looking for a motion for items one and?
One and four, please.
I make that motion to?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye.
Okay, shall I start with the receiving file warrants? Kimberly?
Oh, the vote passed 5-0, thank you.
Okay. So with the warrants, we had been pulling, breaking out the credit cards. I didn't see that this time, I just saw 16, $17,000 credit card charge. Sometimes we get one passed up here at the end. I had talked to the city manager about it. What I'd actually requested was not who charged, how much was charged on each person's credit card, but just what the charges were, like 25,000 to Home Depot or 2,000 to the floral shop, whatever, just a breakdown of that. And it, it was coming, but sometimes it's, that stopped happening. Just the breakdown, does that make sense?
Yes, I can answer that a little bit. Our current system doesn't allow us to separate that out unless we separate the entire process, each and everyone. And that's one of our efficiency measures before I started, was to combine that together because it's one payment to the bank, and our system doesn't break that down. Now, we can make that, you know, you can, at any time, we can have you take a peek at that.
We've been getting that on the council report, we have been in the past.
We can give the listing that shows the names and amounts. It's the breakdown beyond that, that our current system.
We would just have to ask for a copy of the credit card statement?
And it's huge, so it's better for you to peek at it. It's, it's pretty, I mean, it's a stack.
So you're saying you could show the particular staff member's credit card and how much was used on that card, but you just can't break it down into what was purchased in that amount?
Not in our current process.
So, so if councilmembers want to take a look at that and then come into the, you know, make an appointment, come in the office and kind of go through the stack?
Can we still get what was charged into what credit cards? Just because I noticed things were getting charged to the credit cards that people weren't using, remember, and I want to make sure that nothing gets charged on my credit card. Has my name on it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get that back.
I appreciate that.
Wasn't realized it wasn't in the packet. We'll get it back in the packet.
We can, we can do that at any time, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I think it's more about, and I appreciate your offer to come in and look, but I think it's just that if we could at least have a breakdown of what we are getting before, because I think it's just a matter of transparency. We've had some citizens actually contact us and ask why that's not showing anymore. So it's not just us that are asking. So we're, we'd like to see what we are at least getting before.
Will do.
Before I go on, Kimberly, to the other ones, did we vote on this one? Okay. Thank you. Can I get a motion to receive and file the warrants for the period ending February 6, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, made by Vice Mayor Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Campion. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Are unanimous. All right. Capital Improvement Program status update, I believe that was pulled by Council, Vice Mayor Farmer, sorry.
Yeah, I just had a real quick question on this, and I think that what Councilmember Lozano mentioned about getting a, some kind of summary on this would be helpful, and I know that at some point, we're going to get a little more in-depth on this. But on Project 59D, which is the, the transit, the, the Transit Operation Maintenance Center, which is obviously what we'd been talking about recently, I had some information come to me, I was just wanting to clarify just a couple of questions, I don't know if Mr. Clarkson could, was there, was the original, was there original price tag associated with this project back when it was first inception of it?
I don't count, mayor, council, howdy. I don't believe there was at that time because the first estimate that was put together, complete estimate, was under my watch, which was, you know, close to six years, seven years after it started. And I, I had a complete estimate put together in 2017 for what the project was. There was, there was pieces as far as, you know, what, you know, parks wanted. Everybody started kicking into what they wanted to share this transit facility, and I think it was just a, a growing, a growing tree until when I came on, you know, I said, okay, let's figure out what this is going to cost, and then, then we did an estimate at that time.
So there's not a current number that we're, like a ballpark number that we're looking at right now, is what you're saying?
No, not just for the transit facility. What I did is I looked at what everybody, what was on their wish list, you know, from public works to parks and, and to the transit. And that was a price tag of upwards of over $12 million. And there was no funding for that. I mean, that's where we had to say, wait a minute, guys, where, where are we going to come up with the funding for this? And then we had to re, relook at the scale of it. The transit pieces or the pieces that are grants to us come in around $5 million. We're going to do a, a presentation on this on March 5th, that's what we plan to do for the transit, to give a whole history of it, and, and where, where we have been, costs associated with it, and where we, you know, possibly could go in the future with it.
Okay. Well, then maybe I'll just, my second question was just, I know that we're trying to, you know, make this work with the school district, but I've heard rumors around that, that doesn't, I don't know how viable that is. I just want to know if there's like a Plan B, or is like all eggs in one, in that basket for that, or do you think there's some other options out there?
I think we've got some really good options that we'll, we'll, we'll present to you on March 5th.
Okay. I'm sure you'll answer my questions on the presentation, so I would have probably not asked if I'd have known that was coming, so, thanks.
Thank you.
And just one more piece of information as it relates to that particular project. My research at SACOG said that they, that at one point in 2000, I may get this wrong, three or five, there was a call for projects, and they didn't even, from SACOG, when they're, because this Proposition 1B money became available from state. And so everything was just kind of thrown in quickly, so they could identify where that money would go for, go to for the state. And so there were projects from regional transit and other local jurisdictions. And so it should just be noted that how that money became available is through state funding and a need to get projects in quickly so that, so that it could be identified. And, and honestly, I think the city at the time did a really good job putting something forward that the rest of the, the group said, I think that'll work. So I look forward to the, to the presentation next month.
And I just have one comment. I appreciate the effort on the, you know, the, the itemization and where it shows where the status is. I just can't read it. I, I use a magnifying glass.
If, on your computer screen, you can enlarge it.
I don't have a computer.
He's printing, he's already enough to print out, though.
Yeah, I'm just looking. Is there any chance we can get these in a larger version where you can read them?
Consider it done.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now, these touchscreens are great, you just expand. So is it fair to say this, your table's full? Thank you. All right, can I get a motion to receive a second quarter capital improvement program status report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. All right, so number five, authorize the city manager to execute First Amendment to the communications site lease agreement with MetroPCS. Okay?
We approved that one already.
Did we approve?
We approved one and three. Didn't we?
No, you pulled this one.
You pulled five.
You pulled five.
Um.
The pen doesn't lie.
You know what, my mistake, it was supposed to be four.
Right.
I just had a simple question on it. Not complicated. What do we do, since we already approved it?
We approved it. You can ask me later. What do we do? You can ask.
I would suggest that maybe we could complete item five first, and get a motion and a vote on that one, and then you could ask your question about four. Hopefully it won't cause any issues before we have to reconsider.
Okay. I'm sure Emily's happy about this one, get a little bit of a raise. So can I get a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to execute First Amendment to the communications site lease agreement with MetroPCS for location at the municipal service center, 495 Industrial Drive?
So moved.
Second.
What's that, Councilmember Lozano, and then seconded by Councilmember Campion? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. What was your, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, I know the bylaws have been talked about for a long time when I was on the safety committee, what exactly, what was the change? I read through them, but I don't know what they were before. Was there a change, or were they just approving, like renewing them, or what was it?
Let me answer off the top of my head, then you can go. So whenever, hello, safety committee member out there. When, when you change the date of the meeting, we changed them to Mondays, we had to, that has to be a bylaw change. Also, we changed the bylaws that the commission or the chair and the vice chair have to be a council member. That way anybody who serves on the committee could be the chair and the vice chair. We also left it open to the city manager's discretion to require the public, the parks director to be at the meetings. And what else? Okay.
So chair and vice chair can be one of the, the appointed members instead of?
One of the five appointed members, so there's seven voting members on the safety committee.
We still have two councilmembers going, because I don't recall seeing two there all the time before. Is it always two?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was Malsen, myself, and, so it'll, it'll be Sandu and myself, but we do have two councilmembers going.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Want to change it? All right. Thank you. All right, schedule matters?
None tonight.
None tonight? Regular calendar?
None tonight.
Communications?
None tonight.
People, send us some letters. City Clerk's report, subject, amend the Galt Municipal Code regarding qualifications for committee and commission members.
Tonight, we have Tina Hubert, the Executive Assistant to Administration, who's going to give the agenda report.
Hi, Tina.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I am bringing back for adoption ordinance 201901, amending the Galt Municipal Code regarding qualifications for committee and commission members, allowing up to two members to live outside the city limits, but within the boundaries of the Galt Joint Union High School District. Of those two members, the Galt Youth Commission may allow one member at large, and this ordinance excludes the Measure R Oversight Committee. If adopted tonight, the clerk's office will advertise the remaining appointments using the new qualifications. Applications submitted will be presented at the March 5th council meeting, with the appointments made effective March 21st. Any questions?
Wonderful, thank you.
I, I have one question. I've been asked if people had applied already that didn't qualify, let's say they were from the county, once this passes, will they need to reapply during that two month, that two-week period, or they can?
No, their existing application will still be brought forward.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a, oh, I have a question. Last time we considered this, I, I was opposed to changing anything with the Public Safety Committee. Again, I don't have a problem with the balance of the ordinance. Is it possible to make a motion to approve with the exception of Section 7, and then they can come back with a subsequent motion to add it?
Well, I think it would actually, if you were inclined to make that motion, you could, you would have to ask for a second, and then if there's a second, then you would, then somebody would bring a substitute motion to basically take the action that was taken in the last meeting.
Okay.
To introduce the ordinance, because this is second reading. So we could not make, if you were to adopt that, we would have to make changes to the ordinance at second reading, which we cannot do, so we'd have to bring it back to first reading.
She said exclude Measure R, right? Oh, you want to do the safety committee?
Oh, the safety. Well, I, I don't want to complicate things, but I mean, I, I still feel the same way, and therefore I would have to vote against it in the balance.
Okay. Fair enough.
But I will make a motion, just to make the motion, to approve the ordinance as submitted absent Section 7 related to public safety.
Is that a separate motion from the original motion?
That is the original.
Okay, is there a second?
That is the original. There's no second.
No second, motion drops. Or fails for lack of a second. Okay. Vice Mayor Farmer, would you like to read this, since this is your, can you get a motion to, go ahead and read it?
Is it required to read the entire?
Can I get a motion to adopt ordinance number 2019-01, amending the Galt Municipal Code 2.70, Planning Commission, Chapter 2.75, Parks and Rec Commission, Chapter 2.85, Galt Youth Commission, Chapter 2.90, Beautification Committee, Chapter 2.95, Public Safety Committee, Chapter 2.97, Commission on Aging, and Chapter 1828, Historic Preservation Advisory Committee regarding the committee, commission's member qualifications, allowing up to two members to reside within the Galt Joint Union High School District, and of those two, the Galt Youth Commission may allow one member at large.
Thank you, so moved. I will do second.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's call for a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes 4 to 1. Thank you, Tina. It's a mouthful.
Are the banners, is the banner program on here, or where is it? Oh, sorry. All right, so we, now we have the Galt District Chamber of Commerce 150-year anniversary banner program. I know we do have some public comment, do I call for that before, okay, okay, after. So the report?
So the recommended actions tonight is to consider the Galt District Chamber of Commerce 150-year anniversary banner program and provide direction to staff. I want the city council to know that staff met with the chamber president, Bonnie Rodriguez, to discuss the proposal step by step. The entire proposal is attachment one included in the agenda report. If the proposal's approved by city council, staff is recommending following the process outlined in this agenda report. And if approved, city council will need to give direction on banner designs, locations, cost of hardware, and overall funding. Brief summary of key points, there are 10 steps, so I'll highlight a few of them, and then you guys can ask questions and discuss. Item number one would be approve one or two or all five of the banners that chamber has given us. The chamber is requesting all five designs be approved tonight. City is asking the chamber to provide the $30 for the cost of the hardware to install the new banners. There's also various dates throughout the agenda report that were discussed with the chamber, and they concurred with the deadlines. City would provide up to 50 banners using the approved designs by city council. Skipping down to item number eight, city council approved the area locations, there are 1 through 20. Of those 20 locations, there are four of them that currently have banners. Chamber is asking for approval of all locations noted below. You can see the entire cost of every single light pole had a banner installed. A couple of other chamber requests at the bottom of the agenda report would be waive the $40 permit fee for the banners on private property and temporarily extend the maximum duration from 30 days to 120 days or no later than January 31st, 2020. In addition, authorize the purchase of up to 50 banners at a cost of $4,150. Skipping down to the financial analysis for potential funding sources for the installation and removal of the banners, the chamber had two events that were previously approved by this, or previous city council for this fiscal year for in-kind services, up to $7,000. The city's recommending using that monies to install up to 175 banners, 50 from the City of Galt, and 125 could be delivered by the chamber. Under funding source for the hardware, again, the city is asking the chamber for the $30 per banner. And then under the cost for the City of Galt banners, we've, let me see, identified funding sources for up to 42 banners. Those accounts are city council travel, city council community promotions, city council discretionary, and city council supplies and materials. We would be short eight banners, so we'd have to identify an additional funding source for the cost of $664. Currently, the waiving of the $40 permit fee is undetermined cost to the city. That concludes my agenda report. If you guys have any questions?
Yeah.
Discussion?
I know there's some public comment, but, so, the $40 fees and annual costs to the city, it's really a soft cost. It's not anything we were going to get anyway, so it's not really an expense.
Yeah, we have a fee for banners for commercial property owners of $40 for temporary permit application. I don't think, because this is kind of a preset program, I don't think that will be a burden to staff, just because, you know, it's consistent with the program or it's not. There's, the review time will be pretty minimal.
So if Save Mart wanted to put some up, you would have to review them, or they could just?
Well, if it's a preset, typically, we do review.
If they purchased ours?
We do review banner permits, whether or not we do under this program. I don't think that's been determined. But if they're consistent with, you know, the program, staff wouldn't have a problem with the installation.
Yeah, I would say if they just purchased the ones that we have options and have down at the bottom, that... Do we comment now or after?
Now, and then that might answer some of her questions, and then have her come up.
Because if you have questions for staff, now would be the time, and then I'd open up the public comment, and then?
Where did we come up with the 10% on the bottom of the banner? Because these banners, it looks like 20% to me in my eye.
I have the 10% according to other street banner programs. That's the standard, 10%.
Okay. Can we strike that out?
Do whatever you want.
So that we can approve? I do like theirs, I don't know what anybody else thinks yet, but I?
I think what, I think what the discussion is, because I'm actually a chair of the committee for the 150th celebration, so I've been very active in all these ideas. So I think what the idea was, the 10%, is I think that once the designs are presented, I mean, you'll kind of see the font and the size of, like if City of Galt, for example, on some of these, whichever design, if all the designs are approved, if whichever design a sponsor whomever picks, the size of their business name or whatever is going to be dictated by the design. They can't, but, you know, I think there should be something added that says the business can't come along and go, oh, I want my name up the side or real big across.
This is not 10%, though.
I'm saying, I'm not a fan of like sitting there saying 9%, 11%, whatever. It's just whatever the size of the font, for example, if Rayleigh sponsored one, or if, you know, another company, another business in town that had like four words in their name, they're, obviously, their font's going to be, so it's just whatever the banner, the way it's laid out is going to be, is going to indicate the size of the person's name. So I don't think we need to sit there and say, well, 10% of the banner can only have the name, because I think it's going to vary.
That's why I said I wanted to strike that out of the?
I'm not following what you're saying, though.
But the original, so it's proposed that saying, for example, so this is a mock banner, they were saying that only 10% of the banner could include the business sponsor name. But I don't, I think it's kind of a useless thing to have in there, because the design of the banner, because each banner's a little bit different, but they're similar, the size of the font and the name at the bottom of the banner is going to be indicated by whichever design they pick. That's how big the font's going to be. It's not going to be 9% or 11%. I think it's, you can't be consistent from all four designs by picking 10%, is what I'm saying.
So Kurt, looking at the report, the bottom section looks like 20% almost, doesn't it? Get your ruler out. Okay, come on.
I think for consistency purposes, you would want a, you know, each one of these has a, like an area where the name would go. If you start adjusting that, I think you're going to have inconsistencies in the design of the banner.
Right, but we're being asked to approve those designs, those five designs.
That's what they'll be, Kurt, you're right.
What I'm saying is that's more than 10.
What you see is what you'll get.
Okay, so it will be within the confines of that area.
So someone threw in 10%, and that's more than 10%. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, whatever this is would be relative to the overall banner, that's the maximum size.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I get that.
Like, we're like saying, the verbiage should say within the confines of the area, not so much a percentage. Is percentage is kind of, I don't know.
Just you get approved by the chamber of banners.
That's the only question I have right now. I maybe have to look some after, but.
Anybody else have any questions for, Ms. Rodriguez speaks?
I just have one, and I talked to the city manager about this today, and it had to do with the language that addressed the Veterans Banner Program. I just wanted to make sure that we don't use all of the veteran banner pre-designated sites and not allow somebody midstream through the two-year banner program who wants to put a veteran banner up, not be able to, because we have the 150-year banner. I just want to make sure we either reserve some of those, or city manager had a great idea about putting some city-sponsored banners up in those locations so that we could then move them if needed. So that was my only concern about, about that.
It wasn't an issue with the chamber, and we were going to work together, for sure.
Yeah. Just really quick, if I can, is that okay? If I go ahead and speak? Well, first of all?
Just state your name for the record, please.
Bonnie Rodriguez, Galt Chamber. I don't know that councilmember, she wasn't here.
He didn't.
Thank you.
First, I wanted to thank staff for all their hard work, because the public probably can't see it, but these maps are phenomenal. And Mr. Solis drove through town and mapped out every single light pole, and wow, so thank you very much. So, and I know staff worked hard on this. I kind of wish I had seen this before it was made public, though, because there were a couple of things that came up that were, there was a little bit of a surprise. One was the dates, and I think it was just because in that meeting we had, I meant something when I said something, and apparently, something else was meant. And so I think that the March 28 deadline is going to be a little too much of a time crunch for us, so the chamber respectfully asks if we can push that back to April 11th, just give us two more, two more weeks to get the sales. I mean, because we've got to go out there, get them sold, and then get them produced. And I know that that might push back them all being up another two weeks, but we're okay with that, if the city is okay with that. I think that extra two weeks will just be helpful. At first, I was thinking of asking if we could have two separate implementations, one because I thought once they started going up, people might be, oh, hey, I do want one of those, and it might help sell, so we can talk about it. We know that Fourth Street, we want it to be, the bulk of Fourth Street to be done, so maybe if we can get the, some of them early, we can start those up, and people might be able to see them and help sell, but that's, that's up to how staff can handle it. But on that note, in the staff report, it does say that the city has, should have final approval of placement, which I completely respect, but we would just like a little bit of input on where they go, because I think when we go to sell them, we're going to probably break it down into the zones that are mapped out, that Mr. Solis mapped out. And so maybe selling them by zones rather than poles, because you can imagine, obviously already, we have businesses who are requesting a specific pole, and you know that's going to result in two or three businesses requesting a specific pole, and that's not going to work. So we're hoping to be able to sell it by zone, or a possibility of zones, so that maybe we can give them to you in that order and, you know, just have a little bit of input on that, anyway. That's a request. The other is the $30 of asking the chamber for the brackets. I did receive a phone call that that was going to be a possibility, or a potential funding source. I did ask specifically if that was going to be staff's recommendation, and I was told no. So I was a little surprised when I saw that it was staff's recommendation, just so that council is aware and staff is aware. This banner program is a fundraising, fundraising mechanism for the big actual event in September. The chamber is already taking, how do I put this nicely? The chamber is giving the city's 100, or 50 banners at a discounted rate, cheaper than what we can produce them for, because, again, the city is working with taxpayer dollars. We get that, and they have a vendor that is cheaper. However, our vendor, I mean, we want to keep them all the same and all together, so the chamber is already going to be paying, offsetting those costs. On top of, if it's $30 coming out of each of these banners that we sell, that's over half of any fundraising funds that we would be receiving for that banner, so. And there's no way, I mean, chamber is already going to be helping fund any other events that are coming up throughout the year, so we are asked, I mean, we are asking that that not be put on us, and maybe a compromise can be made that after, you know, if we happen to sell, a good problem to have, to happen to sell over 100, that maybe then the chamber can pick up the cost after any, you know, if we get blessed with, you know, selling all of the light poles or something. But again, the chamber just does not have the funds for the $30 per banner. Let's see, there was a couple other themes.
Can I make a quick comment, please? That is not staff's recommendation, it was just part of the financial analysts, where we, I was the one who called Bonnie and told her that this was going to be in there, I didn't want her to be surprised. The recommendation is for you to provide us direction. So it was just a consideration for you to review, so it is not a recommendation from us, it's just a source for you to consider.
How many brackets do we have in good shape right now? Do we know?
You would have to ask. City Clerk.
Problem is, not all the poles have a bottom bracket.
That's correct. So, and so?
So how many do?
There wasn't enough time to inspect every single pole that we are currently using. There are some numbers here in the agenda report for C Street and the, will A Street overpass? There are 44 poles, but I don't, I don't have any idea how many of the brackets are missing, nor how much visibility. It's in the report, it details under 10 feet, 10 feet to 30 feet, and whether it's perfectly clear. So it's really hard to determine how many we actually have. I think the ones that are in the best shape are the ones that are down on Fourth Street, which is line number 10, and there are 21 light poles there. I think half are being currently used by military banners.
Okay. And do you know how many military banners are scheduled to come down and win?
16.
Okay.
Those are coming down off of Lincoln, from the high school.
Okay.
We're, I mean, we hope, we certainly expect to outsell anything you have up right now. So obviously, new brackets are going to have to be purchased.
I would agree with that.
Especially on the east side, obviously.
I have a question on the banners, that you said, you know, our vendor will provide our banners for $83 a banner.
Which is what we're going to charge the city for.
We were going to, I think, I thought we were going to pick up our own banners.
Well, you, I mean?
We're going to purchase our own banners. If the council gives us direction, the city will go ahead and purchase.
But we want you to use the same vendors, so they're consistent. So they're mainly out of the same material, the same ink.
So we'll order the city's?
So what does, what does your vendor charge per banner?
I don't know the exact. Well, it'll depend, because your 50 banners, obviously, are a lot cheaper, because we're not changing that name down there. I believe that their price, the last, I mean, we still hadn't completely negotiated, but because we stopped, their, their final price was, it was like $115 or something like that, so. But, and that's fine. I certainly, as a citizen, certainly respect the city trying to, you know, be careful with the taxpayers' money and only spending the 83. I get that. So we'll go ahead, we're going to do that, but that was just one of those points.
I think, I think it'd be important to mention that.
How does that work?
I think it's important to mention, Mr. Palazzo, that, that the vendor, which is a local vendor, the city does business with already, has done a lot of legwork in the design of the banners, to go to them and say, hey, we're just going to use your design and go off to, you know, Vista Print or whoever, and have them print up. That was a little bit insulting, so we basically went to them and said, well, you have to understand, this is taxpayers' dollars, you know, so on and so forth, and that's why they were willing to say, okay, well, whatever they can get them for, we'll just match that, and we'll just eat the cost on that. The chamber agreed to pick that up in order to keep a good standing relationship with this particular vendor, because of all the work and legwork that they have done. So that's?
Yeah, we weren't aware of all that. That was the first time I heard, I heard that information. Thank you.
And so one, one other thing, I just want to clarify with the shopping centers, this will waive their approval process in every, I mean, so when we go to them, we can say, here's five banners, you go put them up?
If city council approves it, yes.
Right. Okay, so no, no application process at all?
No, they probably would still have to go through the process, there just wouldn't be any charge to them.
Either way, I can work with it. If the program has rules where there's maximum times, there's places to put, the sizes are all predetermined, you know, I don't know.
Well, we would force them to purchase them through us as well. So that'll be our, our banners, so you know the banners would be right, I just don't know if they're, you know.
I think it'd be, I think if we're going to, if the council, seeing what the council feels about that, I mean, it, you know, I think if we're going to waive that fee, you know, we don't want to incur any staff time, then the city's incurring staff time, so if we know what the banners are going to look like, and they're going to go, and we're not putting them up, the private, you know, the shopping centers are putting them themselves, I don't, I mean, and this is obviously outside of a normal, this is for the Galt celebration, so this is not like some other event that we're going to have every year, it's like a one-shot deal.
So it's something, you know, I hadn't considered, and we did talk about the program. It may be a benefit, though, to have them come in and do the application process. We'd be a little bit concerned about the construction. It might be a good idea to have some eyeballs on the sign, and then we can monitor the timeframe, too, because that's what our application does. So our application gives us the opportunity to kind of see what they're doing and then monitor it.
So is there a way, then, that the chamber can help facilitate that? Because I have a feeling that, I mean, you know, owners, especially if we're dealing with someone like the Save Mart Shopping Center, that maybe, I mean, the easier we make it for them, the more likely they'll be to do it. So can the Chamber help facilitate that?
Well, I think staff can help facilitate that. We'd still have the application process because the city just needs to ensure that obviously, like, building code type of standards are met. So there, it would be a streamlined process because it's already been approved. We already have a banner program in place, so it's not something that should be an extensive process. It's just more, we do need to make sure that they are installed correctly and inspected, as we would with any other application that they were to come forward with for their property.
So but I mean, and I get that, but is it something that can I have a stack of applications and go to these people and say?
You bet.
Okay, okay. We'll just.
Have them sign it.
Help them fill it out right here. Just sign here, I'll fill it out, don't worry about it. I won't, I won't do that. So the other thing, and I think we kind of touched on it, but it wasn't actually in the staff report, was that if council chooses to purchase the 50 banners, that you do need to make a choice of which banners you would like us to order for you. And if you want 10 of, you know, each of the five designs, or if you just want one design. So that was the other.
Oh, my.
Let me make a comment on the designs. So there was a lot of back and forth, you know, between a lot of different people. We even went to the public and got some input on just kind of picking people's brain on it. We had some input from the historical society and, of course, from the Chamber. They decided that, you know, we talked about just going with one design. But we thought the reason approving different designs, especially because if we have one-off banners, meaning that, you know, Rayleigh sponsors one and Mr. Councilman Sandu, his business, you know, wants to sponsor one, those are one-off banners. So it's not, there's not really any different, there's not going to be additional or less cost to make a banner. So if the whole design is a different design, one of the four designs or one of the five, then it wouldn't be a big deal. We thought it'd be kind of neat when people would see and go, oh, look, that one's different than the one I just saw over there. They're all kind of have a theme, but it's not just all the same thing you see everywhere. And so because they're different, it kind of breaks it up a little bit. And that was kind of the idea behind having a few designs to pick from. Because one business might like a certain design, another business might like another. And so I think it gives people some some chance to be different.
And also a sales, you know, hey, you can buy one of, you know, one of each. That's my sales pitch, trying to get everybody to buy five.
It's a good idea, because if you see the same thing over and over again, it's easy to ignore. But when they're different, kind of like it pops the eye a little more. I'm, I think the council, the city should buy different ones in even amounts. What do you guys think? Or do you all want one, the same one?
If you're really asking me, there's only one that I, it's not that I dislike it, but it appears more confusing. This is the one where the train's in the middle of 150. To me, it's kind of a distraction. I look at that and I think 15 years, what is that? That's that was my initial reaction.
Let me see it again. Oh.
It does there, because the train's there, it maybe, it might appear.
It looked like, yeah.
Yeah, it says 15 years to me. And so it doesn't convey the message as well as the others. That was my only point.
It looked like a logo.
Well, out of respect for your years of planning and your eye for.
I don't know.
Everybody looks at stuff differently.
We could not have that one.
Yeah, I can see the problem with that one.
The question, how many do you think you've got pre-sold or how many people have expressed an interest?
Well, we've been just kind of testing the waters. We didn't want to go forward with, you know, of course, all five and say, hey, you know, we're going to do this. What do you think? And then have to go, okay, just kidding, you can't pick that one or or no, you know. So we just kind of tested the waters, and we have not had a no from anyone. So everyone's been interested. In fact, I did speak to the high school board as well. We're trying to get everybody involved, see if they can get them up in their school parking lots and that kind of thing. And someone from the audience raised their hand and said, can the Lions Club buy them? So, I mean, I didn't, hadn't even talked to them yet, and they were, you know, so people are interested in them.
Okay. Yeah, we're talking about bringing, we're talking about reaching out to businesses, private. If somebody wants to put, you know, buy one and put the Smiths family, like a family wants to go in on one. You know, nonprofits, we're trying to talk nonprofits into buying, you know, go and say, can we buy a few of them? You know, we're trying to get some people to buy multiples. I think just initially, I've gotten probably at least a dozen people just I've mentioned it to that are interested. And I think it's, that's an important key is that, you know, this is celebrating 150 years of our community. This is something that won't happen again for another 50 years and hasn't happened since, you know, before I was even born, last time we celebrated something like this. So it's important that we have everybody in there, school, businesses, private citizens, the city, of course. That's the whole thing of is we want people to feel like they're involved in it.
We are also reaching out to the outlying schools that feed into our district, mainly because it was the Galt area at that point when Galt was started, obviously, before Galt proper was named. And we've gotten good feedback from our sister areas or whatever you want to call them as well.
Yes, I, you know, I, and I hope you're successful. The last thing I would want to see is 50 banners out there with just the city of Galt on it. You know, I mean, that, and not that that's going to happen, but I would like to see, you know, I don't know how we can encourage individual businesses or property owners to purchase the banners. But I certainly hope that at least, you know, 50 banners are purchased.
I don't think that's, I would, I would, I would gander right now, we're going to probably have easily over 100, just based on early, 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 you know, we've already had organizations say, I'll take five, I'll take five. I mean, it's going to be, and and the Chamber has a lot of motivated people that are going to work really hard on this, that are already ready to go hit the streets right now and sell these. So the Chamber's going to be doing all the legwork. I mean, I would like to think that maybe the city could post something on their website, you know, advertising, and then maybe put a contact email if they're interested, direct them. So, I mean, you know, and with social media and everything that some other businesses are offering too, I think it's going to, it's going to sell really well, just based on early, you know, early feedback.
Get Amy and Chris on board. I asked a couple businesses and they said, sure. Let me talk to my district managers. We just have to ask. Also, getting the whole city involved. I've already talked to the shop local and the extravaganza committee, and they're going to have 100 years on their T-shirt. And I'm hoping for the independent celebration, we can have 150, sorry, 150-year celebration somehow incorporated into that, the T-shirt and maybe even the parade, you know, go see if we can find some 150-year-old tractors and things like that. I know we have some around.
I think we're going to, has there been talk about the Chamber doing like a booth at events throughout the year? Leading up to September?
This is just one of, one of the many fundraisers at the Chamber is considering we have a lot of other souvenir-ish type, type things that are coming down the pipe that will start getting out there. And really, you know, and this is beyond the banner program, obviously, but really trying to just promote up to that big event and then make this something. So the community just feels like, you know, oh, I have, we're talking about collector pins that will come out, you know, every other month or something like that. So people are looking for those kind of things, and then they feel like they have a part of, they were part of something, and just trying to pull the whole community together, which is why I really think it's important that these banners are also on the east side to pull. Because it seems like we tend to have, and the Chamber's just as guilty, we tend to have events for Old Town. And, you know, yeah, we invite everybody else, but it's Old Town. Or we have an event on the east side, but everyone's invited, but it's really the east side. So hoping that these banners will help bring us all as one and forget about that 99 divide. And then, of course, these brackets are up, are up. You're not going to take those down when the banners come down. And, you know, other cities, and I know Donna looked into other cities, they all have banner programs. So it's, I don't know that it's a revenue maker, but it's something that, you know, if Tiny Smiles wants to buy their own banners next year along their run site, and now they can have, now they pay $50 for you to put them up, and and you have them up for the week or two, however long it lasts, or for extravaganza, or for the, for Independence Day. It's a form of communication for the city to, you know, on both sides of that 99.
So I have two thoughts to dive into this real quick on specifics. We can just keep stringing this along. I don't know if these are questions for Public Works or for Parks and Recreation, whoever be putting this up. So we talked about, I'm thinking, to do like a one-shot deal where you have like a deadline where we sell them all and then they all go up at this date, I'm wondering if that's going to be a little bit of a hindrance because people will see them and go, oh, where'd those come from? And then they go, oh, you can get those, you can buy those. And then I'm wondering if, if you have, we had two rounds, like, so we put some up, say, in April, and then we did one more round at like the end of April or say, give a 30-day window. How does that break up the staff time as far as putting them up? Is that, how would that, how would that increase staff time a lot? How would it, how would it affect staff?
Yeah, it'd be actually Public Works that would be putting these banners up, so more clerks can address that.
I think we're looking at putting up several an hour. So, you know, it's a two, a two-person crew to go out there and do this. And so if we got orders at anywhere from 15 to 20 at a time, that would just take a crew half a day to a full day to do the work.
Right.
Depending on what's going on. So so it would be okay not to get 100 at first, you know. But if we'd get, you know, it's, when you break up your time, if you have a half a day amount of work, that that would be, you know, easy to fit in there and do that. And so 10 to 15 banners would be terrific.
That's great news.
Yes.
I think it would just help sell them, and just want to make sure that we weren't.
I do too. My only concern with that, as I thought through it, is, you know, if we know we are, we're going to have 150 banners, then we can, looking at the maps, can evenly distribute them. But if we're, if we're only going, you know, right now, we have 75, and we hope to get another 75, you know, how do you plan to?
Which leads into my next question. I know there was a lot of discussion about how they would be distributed. So I know that one selling point, at least with a lot of people I talked to, is like, yeah, I'd buy one. I would like it to be like this, this pole right here. If that pole is in the map, I know the map, which, by the way, Armand did a fabulous job on the map. I saw, I met with him when he was making it up, and it's really cool. I saw the finished product. So, I mean, if we were able to identify, I think, I think we might actually run into some problems if we weren't able to let people say, you said, well, who goes, who gets what pole? Well, it's, we talked about first come, first served. If, you know, Paul comes first and says, I want to be the first person to buy a banner, and his money comes in first, and he says, I want pole, you know, pole number one out of 200, and he designates on the map which pole that is, maybe he wants it where he wants it. If you don't, and we just get, they just get put up at whose ever discretion, then you might have somebody say, you know, I don't like the location I pull, I paid good money for that banner, and it's over in some weird spot. You see what I'm saying? So if you let people pick, then they have no, they can, they cannot complain about what pole they got. Now, if the pole's not available, if they're two weeks into the program and they go, I want that pole, you can say, well, that pole's not available, these are the poles that are available.
So so my only question then for Public Works would be, someone, I mean, you have five people who have chosen specific polls. I mean, how, I mean, that, how much extra staff time is that to be very specific with those banners? Rather than here's 10 banners and here's 10 poles.
We still have to take the boom down, move the truck. You know, whether we're moving down three poles or we're moving down 10 poles, it's just a minute longer. It's not very long.
I meant if someone, you know, Top Chef Bakery comes and says, this is my specific pole, and now you're looking through, you're at that pole and you have to look through to find that specific banner. Or, you know, how is that communicated? What does that look like?
I see that that we would set it up internally. We would already have the poles designated, not in the field, but we'd have a work order that would show the poles and the banners connected to it, and our crews would go out and do that. Administratively, we would figure out which poles, you know, you know, between the Chamber, whoever.
The information's got to come from the Chamber, though. I mean, in order for you to put it together.
Yeah, but we could.
We're not choosing the poles. You tell us.
Right.
So you're going to have this, this banner, this light pole number?
Yes, I like that idea. I mean, if it, like I said, because then it just, then people can't complain about where their banner got placed. There's just no qualms. And and it will encourage people, I think, from a sales standpoint, because you're like, it's a first come, first served basis. Polls are specified by whose money comes in first. Then there's kind of a frenzy for people to start buying them. You know what I'm saying? I think that would be an incentive. I know it would be for me, you know, to get one where I wanted it, so.
Okay. You could use a Google Doc and you could both have access to it and change it, changing as it goes and logging them in.
He made a great map. Mr. Solis made a great map. It'd be easy to number the polls, just number pole number, whatever. Obviously, the ones that are marked in red, I believe, are low visibility, so those are going to be ones that nobody wants. So I think it's going to be very simple, actually.
Yeah, I had a question on that. I'm looking at the legend, and it says, green is clear. What does clear mean?
There is a clear view up from up to 50 feet away as you're driving down. The yellow is 10 to 30 feet. You'd actually have to be past a tree. There's a tree in front of it, but not completely blocking it.
And under 10 foot, okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if this was relating to height or what.
Get your green poles.
And the reds, that they may already have signs on them, those type of things.
Some in Old Town are like, have, once the trees come back in, you kind of have to be, foot traffic will still see them. So they're good spots still because you get a lot of foot traffic. They're not going to be visible like the green ones, which you can drive down the road and just clearly see it. Yeah.
Okay, I get you.
Okay. So what do we need?
You want to see if there's?
What do we need direction-wise?
Is there other public comment?
Do we have any more public comment? Anybody want to fill out a card? Anybody not want to fill out a card and come up? Okay. So staff, we're looking for direction or do we need a motion?
Yes, absolutely, and direction. So you have items one through 10 listed in front of you. Listen to the conversation that occurred. You've made a few changes as far as the approving the design of the banners. That's a decision that needs to be made.
Okay.
Might be helpful if you go one through 10 and just give us some clear direction so we know how to proceed. Thank you.
Well, there's some changes that you want to make through items one through 10?
Just go item for item, and then maybe we can skip one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. So the banner designs, what is council's pleasure?
I would propose that we do all but number four.
So four banner approved.
I would second that.
Third?
Four.
I agree.
Okay. All right, got it?
Item number two was Chamber would be responsible for supplying up to 125 banners to the city. We'll change that date, March 28th, 2019. Discussion was April 11th, 2019. And then Vice Mayor Farmer also suggested a second date as well. Would you like to clarify that?
Well, if the Chamber would approve, maybe we could just pick, I mean, I know we want to get this as soon as possible. Should we pick a second final date of maybe two or three weeks or maybe 30?
Yeah.
Why don't we say starting March 28th and leave it open-ended? I mean, we might.
You have to have a date.
What's the final, Thanksgiving? I mean.
Well, we can't do, we can't go too far down the road, because what's going to happen is a business is going to say, well, I'm paying the same, same amount that Mr. Sandu paid, but his banner gets to be put up for 10 months, and mine only gets to be put up for 60.
You should have bought one sooner.
Well, that's true. I, is the Chamber comfortable with the 28th and the 11th as the two dates? Or would you rather do the 11th and then?
Can we leave it a little open-ended just in case someone buys, you know, 20 banners?
How about we do March 28th and April 28th? Keep it 30-day window for selling.
March 28th and April 28th, correct?
Okay, yeah, I do not like.
The size of the banners, item number three.
Chamber provides $30 per banner for the purchase of hardware to install banners. Are we taking that off?
What were you going to say?
I was just, sorry, I was just getting clarification on the April, the March 28th and April 28th, because it currently says that Chamber would be responsible for supplying up to 125 banners to the city, no later than. So are we saying we'll be responsible for supplying banners to the city?
Yes.
Starting?
Starting March 28th and ending by April 28th.
And the final date of the second round by April 28th.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We can just leave it open from March 28th all the way to April 28th, with April 28th being the final sell date. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, but I think what we want to do is have, go ahead and have Public Works do the first round of them. However many we present by the 28th, they could go ahead and put those up.
Yeah, no problem. Is that clear, clear for you?
Yes, thank you.
Then item number three, I believe.
Hold on, we're going to take off the $30. You're, we're asking the Chamber to provide $30 per banner.
What item is that?
Number two.
Number two. The last sentence says, in addition, the Chamber would provide 30 per banner for the purchase of hardware to install the banners.
Merry Christmas to us. I'm not comfortable with how much, we don't even know what the cost of that would be.
$3,750.
And they're already giving us a discount on our banners.
Well, my problem with that would be that the Chamber's trying to use this banner as a funding mechanism for the actual event so that we can raise as much money as possible to actually help put the event on. So, I mean, to basically be behind the eight ball right away with three, by three grand, we'd have to like then raise three grand just to be breaking even on the program. I think also, too, the brackets are not going to belong to the Chamber, they're going to belong to the city. Once they're purchased and they're up, they're forever going to belong to the city. So I think, actually, we had found brackets that were actually quite a bit more. So the fact that someone found banners for, or brackets for $30, I don't know who said they found it for that cost is actually a great deal. Was that what was found?
Public Works.
Public Works?
Yes.
Yeah.
I probably made them.
So I, you know, I think the Chamber is, you know, carrying a big part of this, you know, and really spearheading this, this event, which, happy to see that, because we know the city can't do it alone, but I think the city needs to definitely be a big piece of it because it is their birthday. So I personally feel that we shouldn't ask them to pay for that. I think the city should cover that. That's just my feeling.
There are funds, there's, they've identified some fund sources in the staff report, but I have a, you know, my concern is that, you know, when I read the report, I assumed that it would be the responsibility of the chamber, and, and ultimately, it's not the chamber, it would be whoever's purchasing the banner, wouldn't it?
Well, no, because we couldn't go and say, you're gonna buy a banner, but, oh, the poll you want doesn't have a bracket, so that's gonna be this much more money, I don't, I don't know that that would, that might be a deal killer, because we're already talking about it, we're already talking about a $200 banner to a business, that's what the cost point's gonna be, am I, am I correct on that? Because we're trying to raise, they're trying to raise money for the event at the end of the year, it's a fundraising mechanism to generate money, I mean, if the city of Galt was like, hey, we got this money, we're gonna, we're gonna just put out $20,000 to, to have this event at the end of the year, I think we could just do whatever, but the point of it is, there needs to be money, there needs to be money for the event, and the chamber is basically stepping up to raise money to throw Galt a birthday celebration, and so, it's a little awkward to have, you know, the person whose birthday it is, want somebody else to pay for everything, that's all I'm saying, that's, that's the mindset right now.
Well, I, I guess my concern is, after going over the, the long-term fiscal picture, it, it makes me concerned that, that we're, we're spending money unexpectedly like this, and, and it's not within any budget appropriation.
Well, and I, and I can see your point there, but I also wanna note that this is a one-shot deal, this is 150th celebration.
Understand.
This is not something we're gonna do every year.
We won't do it for 200.
I mean, this is something that's, I mean, this is something that we're gonna bring, this is gonna, the community of Galt's gonna celebrate this together, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but we celebrated, there was a celebration a couple of years ago, of the 70th, or something like that, and it basically, there was money spent on that, and only staff went, we didn't even include the community in that, I mean, this, this is, for us to sit here and approve things left and right, with money for this and money for that, for things that the citizens, you know, blow up my email every day, saying, why'd you guys spend money on that, why'd you, whatever, and then we're gonna sit here and go, well, we can't spend money on our birthday, that's not gonna sit well with the people of Galt, and tell you, because it's all about quality of life here, Kurt, I mean, telling you, this.
I understand.
You know, so I mean, this, I, I think this, this is a little bit outside of a normal event, that somebody's coming in and saying, hey, well, you sponsor my race, or you sponsor my whatever, this is kind of a little bit different, because this is the city's birthday party, this is not the chamber's birthday party, or the historical site, this is, this is the city of Galt's birthday.
Related to that, if I could just note that you would wanna include the caveat, though, with this program, that the funds are indeed given to that special event for the city, because if you're giving the $30, waiving the $30 fee, we wanna avoid any gift of public funds issue, so you wanna make sure it's going to a public community event.
I think the chamber would, would, I think the chamber should, in fact, be willing to consent to that.
Can you say that again?
Yes.
That the city, that the funds would indeed, from this, they're used for the fundraiser, and that the funds are committed to this community event, so that we, because we'd have concerns otherwise, that you're waiving fees for a private organization, and then that could be seen as a gift of public funds, so we wanna make sure that there's a tie to a city event, a, a public event related to the community.
And another notation, Kurt, too, I know that one of the funding sources was the two events that the chamber, you know, waived, so, you know, as we all know, there's amount of, there's certain funds that organizations come forth and put a, put an application in for, and then that money's allocated, that money was, you know, earmarked by the previous councils to be used in the community for events that, you know, the community can enjoy.
Yes.
The, the chamber has basically decided early on, before this even idea came forward, we knew the 150th was coming, I think there was a discussion, well, we're gonna have to trim some, some stuff up, so, those two events were basically abandoned, with the theory that hopefully we could try to reapply for those funds, I see we, meaning the chamber, because I'm a chamber member, to reapply for some of those funds, because we wanna raise as much money as we can through funding mechanisms like this banner and other things that are in the works, but ultimately, you know, they were trying to basically shift money from, instead of having a street fair, for example, or whatever the other i, item was, that was, that was decided against, that could be shifted over, so I think for us to say that we're going to buy, the city, that, yeah, the city, for, for the city to say, yeah, I'm, I'm in, I'll buy 50 banners, but can I use that money that we were gonna give to the chamber originally, it's almost like using chamber money, almost, I mean, it's city money, but it really was earmarked for, I mean, I don't wanna, you see my point? It's kind of a, it's kind of using somebody's own funding that was, that was put aside for a different reason, that's, I'm just, that's the way I look at it.
I just wanna, can I ask Kimberly really quick? Because I don't understand the public funds thing, because we're giving, the, it's, the city is purchasing their banners at cost, at the cost that you would pay for the military, so you're talking about the brackets?
Yes, so I'm saying, if the city were to.
But the city's keeping the brackets.
But if the city were to pay to purchase the brackets that it doesn't necessarily need, then it, there's a potential argument under the constitutional prohibition of gift of public funds, that there would be a concern that you've then given these, purchased these brackets for a private organization to use for their banners, right, so I understand that they're related to a community event, and that's the intent, and so I think with that, there's not a gift of public funds issue, as long as they're going, the funding and the revenue that's raised from those, including the, the money the city is spending on the brackets, will then help facilitate this public event only, and not for other chamber events that might not be city or community related.
Okay, so that, thank you, because I knew that there was a reason why, because I had looked into it, and when we met, I think I, I was going into it thinking that this would jumpstart a city banner program, and that would be the incentive for the city to purchase the brackets, because they could, so now it's the city's program, that they could do whatever they wanted with, so I think that's why I went to that, was exactly for what you just said.
And that's a valid point, that the council can certainly take into consideration, if they're willing to waive that, that they would, they would also be able to use the brackets for future events, but obviously, some of them are on private property, so they may not be allowed.
Well, oh, we're not asking, I'm not gonna ask, I certainly am not asking the city to purchase the brackets for the shopping centers.
Right.
Yeah, they would be in charge of their own, they would have to take care of that.
So the brackets would only be on public property?
Exactly.
Right, the brackets were asking you to purchase, yeah, so anything within those shopping centers, or if anybody has a.
So these are basically only for city light poles?
So maybe.
These brackets are not for public light poles, I mean, for private light poles.
So maybe the clarification then would be that the, in addition, the chamber would provide $30 per banner for the purchase, purchase of hardware to install banners on private property, private poles.
No, I'm gonna, my intent, unless I can't do this, my intent is to go to Save Mart and say, buy five banners, go put them up, and here's your application sign here, and if they don't have brackets, they're gonna have to go get brackets.
Okay, so.
Themselves.
And maybe that was my confusion, I was thinking, I guess I had this, I was understanding that Public Works would be installing all of the banners, but they're not installing the ones on private property?
No.
Correct. So that's probably, okay, okay.
I mean, unless you.
So who would be responsible for installing the private property?
Them, themselves.
Okay.
Well, that was, I thought that's how things work, so you tell me.
Have you ever?
Okay, yeah, I, no, we were not, I was not gonna have the city be involved at all with the private, with the private entities, other than just waiving this fee, and that approval process for them to have to go through, to put their own signs up all by themselves.
That, that I think is fine.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Direction on the funding source for the banner hardware?
We'll have to keep, we'll keep looking.
I was just gonna add on the funding sources, if, if council approves the funding sources identified, then we can calculate what that means to how many banners, so that the math all works, just math, you know, for the 30 brackets and all of that.
Yeah, but the funding sources designated are council discretionary, which is not gonna make that big of a dent, and to be honest with you, I'm already actually planning on donating my discretionary to some stuff for the event already, some other, another project that actually Chris and I have been working on, if he knows what I'm talking about.
That's what I thought.
I'd like to see my discretionary go towards that, and, but, and then, like I said, the event money, I mean, I, I just, like I said, I mean, we don't, we're, the idea is here to not, the idea is that the chamber's trying to raise money for the city's birthday, so we're basically, chamber's helping the city, we don't wanna inconvenience, we don't wanna, you know, give the chamber a big setback by saying, oh, you know, you know, you gotta use this money that could've been developed, whatever, because basically, you know, there's still gotta be money found for the event, we're gonna try to raise as much as possible, but ultimately, so I, I personally don't wanna sit there and, and say, yeah, well, I think we should do discretionary, or the two fund, the two event funds, that, that's my, that's just me, one of five people up here, I'm just me.
The way I, I'm looking at the staff report, and they've identified $3,500 in, in revenue that can be used to offset the cost of the eight banners, as well as, if we're gonna purchase additional attachment hardware, you'd be somewhere, well, absent the, the 600, the $600, you'd be at about 115 or 100 banners, is what you have funding for.
I see 7,000 community promotions. Where are you seeing the 35, what page?
Well, I'm looking down here, where it says they're $83 a banner, and you, that would purchase up to, what, 42?
Correct.
Okay, but there's also the $7,000 community promotions.
That's to install and remove.
Yeah.
Up to 175 banners, but what he's saying is you could reduce the number of banners in order to fit the budget.
Right.
We're only asking the city to buy 50 banners, that's only a $4150 cost at $83 a banner, right? That's the fun, that's the funding that we're looking at, right, specifically right now, would be 83, um, 83 dollars per banner is what the city's cost's gonna be, we're asking you, the city to purchase 50, that's what we're talking about, so that's $4150, so that's the funding that we're looking for this moment.
So, full disclosure, apparently, there are chamber board members watching, and so I'm getting several texts from people, and we meet as a chamber board tomorrow, so I can, we can ratify this tomorrow, but the chamber, is there a possibility of the chamber, or the city purchasing up to, you know, 100 brackets, and then the chamber will purchase from there, an option like that, so that they help offset some costs, or the?
Because as you make more profit.
Right, yeah, so the more, the more banners we sell, obviously, the, there will be, you know, I mean, it does take away from that event, but, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can, so that, that's an option, you know, to try to, you know, give a little bit.
Okay. All right, so we'll work on that.
Okay, so, item three, I heard from Mayor Lamson about the 10% of the banner size being logo, she would like to have that.
I do wanna clarify with that, though, so everybody is aware, we are not putting any logos, it is just going to be text, because we don't want, we don't really wanna commercialize the whole thing, so there will be no logos, it will just solely be the names of the sponsors.
Will it be consistent in terms of the font?
Well, it'll depend on the name of.
A banner.
Of the business, because if it's a long name.
Yes, it will be consistent with the design, Kurt, like this particular design, that's the exact font, that'll be.
Okay.
Size of the font, everything will be indicative, only different is if, like, if it's like, you know, BMD, obviously, you know, if it had a longer name, they might have to go two lines with the name, then it's gonna be smaller, because it's supposed to fit in that same.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
But no logos.
So take off logo.
Yeah, so strike logo, and, and strike does not exceed 10% of the banner size, and you're okay with that?
Because we've approved the banners.
Okay. And then item four, up to 50 banners, using the approved design by City Council?
Designs, good job, there's an S on there.
And then the banners would be installed no later than April 30th, we'll extend that by two weeks, as.
Yeah, to give you a disgust.
And then remove no later than January, or by January 31st, I should say, 2020.
Yeah, and I do think for the shopping centers, it, there's two, there's two choices in there, we'd like them to be able to keep them up, if they choose, till the city ones come down, so that January.
31st.
31st of 2020, for the shopping centers as well.
Okay, item six, the damage to the banners is pretty explanatory. Item seven, city shall make the final determination of banner placement with.
Pending advice, pending request, what, I mean.
Working with the chamber.
Yeah. How would you verbiage the word that?
Well, I think we decided to allow for a first come, first served basis on the, on the, on the location, and we would, we would provide Public Works with a indication of poll versus which banner goes which poll, we would provide, the chamber's gonna provide that to them, so that they could distribute them.
I guess on the caveat of, you know, final determination by the Public Works Director, City Engineer, if that poll, you know, can't handle it, or there's something that we find.
Oh, I would agree, I would agree with that as well, yeah, we just come back and say, look, there's an issue with that poll, we can't use that poll for a banner, so can we get back to the business owner and ask him to pick a second choice?
Yeah.
So, so we need to have that discretion for final determination.
With consultation with the chamber, how about that?
That works.
Okay, and then as far as the banner locations on item eight, did you wanna approve all 20 locations?
Fabulous job, yeah, I think everyone's gonna go for the clear.
The green light. Item nine is waive the permit fee.
Good.
And item 10 is authorize.
On private property, it should be noted that they should, they still have to get an application.
Yes, you're right, it has to be noted.
Yeah, put that in.
That's complete application. And item 10 is to author, authorize the purchase of up to 50 banners, at a program cost of $4,150 for the banners.
Okay.
And you have to choose your design.
Hmm?
And you need to choose your design.
We were gonna pick them evenly, except for four.
No, she means, she means that the 50 banners at the city we purchased, they wanna go all in design, or you wanna mix it up?
Mix it up, mix it up.
10 and 10?
Yeah, 10, 10, 10.
No, no, it'd be 12. Actually, we can't do that.
12, 12.
Right, that's what I said.
We can't do that, because the cost, the discount is based on doing 50 banners at one time, that's how you get the cost down, if we did a whole bunch of different ones, the cost would change.
No, I think, I think they're gonna go ahead and, I will get back to you, but I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
That's the way it is, and you want it to say, city of Galt?
Or what?
I, I didn't think about that.
Yeah, just like it says here.
Not Public Works Department, or? Parks and Recreation Department?
And if there is a problem, I, I don't really care if they wanna have to pick one, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, if, we can pick one if, if there's a problem, this one's my favorite.
I see, we just split it up?
Okay, I, I tell you what, can you pick one, just in case we have to go with the one, and then if, if not, then we'll do.
Design you like best, Kurt, out of, if you had to pick one out of the four.
This one.
I'm good, that's fine.
I like that one, too.
Okay.
What number is that?
Well.
What number?
It's, it's number.
Five?
Five.
You're good.
So then I would need a motion from items one through 10, with the amendments outlined?
So moved?
Second.
There you go. Kimberly, do you wanna put it in better words? Are we okay?
You're good.
Okay, thank you.
We got it, thank you.
All right.
I just would like to ask about the funding sources, did you wanna give direction on that as well?
Well, I would ask, if the council would agree, we ask City Manager to come back with some funding options, I mean, I know there's, I'm not an expert on the budget, and I know that, you know, I don't wanna get into stuff about budget numbers, and how we have things to address with the budget and all that, but I think, you know, we have a lot of TOT money coming in different ways, we have a lot, I just, I mean, if, if the city of Galt can't dig around and find $4,000 to buy banners for their own birthday, then I think we gotta, I think that's pretty sad, I think we got a bigger problem going on, so I would like to see some options, maybe, Mr. Plaza can get creative and come back to us.
Well, you know, to kinda have the budget works, yeah, in some clarity here, $4150
So I would like to see some options, maybe Mr. Plaza can get creative and come back to us.
Well, you know, to kinda have the budget works, yeah, and some clarity here. Forty-one fifty to purchase the banners, and then there's another thirty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for hardware. Total is seventy-nine hundred dollars is the way I see it, if, that's what I'm hearing the council say, you know,
That's what I got here, yeah.
That you wanna spend. Budget-wise, you know, middle, mid-year here, we haven't addressed it. We have mid-year budget, we can come back and try and, you know, do an adjustment into community promotions or something to, to, you know, add, add those dollars into this budget process, probably the easiest, easiest way. You know, what we were trying to do is absorb, you know, the initial costs with, you know, dollars that were already there.
Is there, yeah, is there a reason we wouldn't use the seven thousand that's already in community promotion?
Well, because, because we're, we don't really know, we're still gathering data right now, but the event as it is could probably have a price tag of fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, you know, when it comes time in September for them to put the event on. So we're trying to raise money as much as possible, but if we use that seven thousand that the chamber was gonna use in the first place, those, that was money that was gonna go to chamber events, the chamber has now said we're not gonna do those events, so that in hopes that possibly they could apply for those funds. Do you see the point?
Well, yeah, but this is a chamber event.
No, it's not a chamber event, that's the confusion here.
Let me, I'm, I'm kinda confused here, when you say seven thousand, is that the community promotions dollars?
Yes.
That seven thousand, I wasn't counting, that is to install the banners with, that staff time to install banners. That's in this year's budget, typically doesn't roll over, you know, into next year when you're gonna have this event. If there's gonna be costs that the city needs to, you know, pay for, for a future event, then that needs to be incorporated into next year's budget.
Is the fiscal year ending in June, is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Right, the chamber intends to apply for the special event, thing like, like they do.
That would be the process to do that.
Okay, so what you're saying is we could use that funding in this fiscal year to offset this cost?
The seven thousand is to install, for staff time to install the banners.
Install and remove.
Install and remove the banners. The, um, the other seventy-nine hundred dollars that we need, you know, it'll be about seven thousand dollars to install the banners. They're removing, and then we need another seventy-nine hundred dollars, four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to purchase banners, that's fifty, fifty banners, and then for a hundred and twenty-five pieces of hardware at thirty dollars each is three thousand seven hundred and fifty. So we need another seventy-nine hundred dollars combined, you know, together to put these banners up.
Right.
And, you know, staff came up with, you know, three thousand some odd dollars here-
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred dollars, through council, dollars that we just, that are probably not gonna be used this, this fiscal year. You know, to add to that, you know, my recommendation would be to, you know, come back at mid-year and kind of incorporate dollars somewhere to, to kind of offset, you know, the, the final cost. Would that be a good way, Ms. Tyson?
So were you referring to some special events that we had budgeted for, that didn't happen?
Well, I think what I was confused on is, I think the money that the chamber's gonna apply for is in the next fiscal year, they would be applying for funding there, so what Mr. Plaza's referring to is using that money of the two events that were going to be spent in this fiscal year, but now we're not doing, am I right? Using that money to offset that seven thousand, right?
But to put, to put 'em up, that's what that, that's what-
Seven thousand.
The city manager's talking about, is that seven thousand dollars that we, from not doing our event, is now going to be used to put these banners up.
Right, but he's saying it'll just be used just to put the banners up, that's it, not the other stuff. Is it gonna cost seven thousand to put up those banners, really?
Hundred and seventy-five.
We're estimating about forty bucks an hour, and it's, you know, hour, you know, one to two banners an hour, probably, to, you know, get these up, I think is what the numbers we got back from Public Works. Is that correct?
Yeah, we were looking at probably two banners an hour, but we'll get, you know, with brackets and everything. But that will speed up after we get, we get moving. And that's why, even, even though we're looking at, at, that's an eighty-dollar period for two, two banners going up, we've got the truck, we've got everything else that's involved with that, but we'll be more efficient. We did have a higher number, but that was the lowest we can come up.
And again, there's contingency need in there, and you don't know what happens on the polls, and, you know, it's, it takes time.
So discretionary money is also the same way, is that reset in June?
Yes.
I believe that's mine.
No, the discretionary funds, yeah, currently, the way I understand it, and Ms. Settle's correcting me if I, I'm wrong here, the previous council, two members spent their discretionary funds. One council member did not, so that's the thousand dollars that's in here on the discretionary funds. Councilmember Lamson and Councilmember Campion have not spent their discretionary funds.
I would like to, I'm gonna figure out, I'd like to do five hundred towards Cert. like I do for the events, and then probably five hundred towards this, but-
So, so we have about a thousand dollars in discretionary funds that, you know, would, you know, this council can decide how you'd like to spend that, you know, come July one, with the new budget. We have five thousand dollars budgeted for one thousand, for each council member in discretionary funds for next fiscal year.
So does the-
Great, thank you.
Discretionary funds for myself and Sandu and Lozano, there's-
We do not have those funds budgeted for this fiscal year, that, you know, two thousand dollars that were spent by the previous council, one thousand was not spent, and that's what is in, you know, the staff report this evening.
I think Kurt and I still have a thousand.
So come June, the three of us-
July one.
Members will have-
July one.
July one. And how much is that?
A thousand dollars each council member.
Well, I would be okay, I guess, with using that funding, I just didn't wanna see it taken away from possible, you know, application for the event in September, but it wouldn't because of, so I would, I would, I would be in favor of using that money. As far as the discretionary, it's not mine to say, so it'd be up to council members whose money that is.
I can bring back on the agenda five hundred towards brackets.
Fabulous.
Okay. Excuse me.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I think this is gonna be an important event for, not, not just for the city, but for the community. So whatever we can do to help support it, I don't see it as a chamber event, I see it as a chamber-led event. I think you'll see in the next month or two, many, many organizations in the community come together to help with this. One of the things that was brushed over real lightly that, that I think it's worth mentioning again is that this, once we get brackets up, there, I believe it opens endless possibilities for, to include in our sponsorship program. And so a couple of examples would be, you know, using, creating banners that announce T-ball registration, or what, anything that we put on a marquee and find a, a local business, or even a, a business outside of the area that's interested in using, you know, sponsoring that banner for that time, I think we can use it for that. So I see some other possibilities to generate revenue based on that, so those are just my thoughts. I, I like the banners.
Yeah, we, we could sell like, you know, banners that say, "Great American Little Town", and if businesses wanted to sponsor those as advertising for their business, the city could have a revenue of, I mean, I think there's lots of possibilities out there, yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, so I have a motion by Lamson, seconded by Farmer, for items one through ten, with Palazzo bringing back or putting in the budget, midterm budget review?
Just do mid-year budget adjustment-
Okay.
For the remaining of the funds.
Remaining funding. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye.
Thank you, on behalf of the chamber and the Historical Society, I thank you. And I just wanted to say that those banners will look really good with like the Sandu family on the bottom of it, Lozano family. So I'll take your order when-
Okay. All right, we have come to the favorite part, comments by staff.
Ms. Tyson?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Clarkson?
Nothing, thank you.
I'm not breaking the trend, nothing to report.
Okay, Tina's gone. Cora, who, what are you, who are you hiring?
I'm hiring, so, of course, police officers, always on the list. Plant maintenance mechanic, wastewater plant supervisor, parks worker one, and swim coach, right now.
How many swim coaches? You know, swinny?
We need one head swim coach.
And then when do you do your lifeguard?
Sorry?
When do you start training lifeguards and hiring them?
Uh, the first week in March.
Okay, it's getting close. All right, Mr. Solis?
No, thank you.
Looks like you got extra time, Chief Stockman.
No, I appreciate that, so I have a lot to say. Just kidding, just the, the gang presentation at Galt High was a fantastic turnout, great questions from the audience, so appreciate everybody on all of our citizens and members of council that were there. So it's a great informative presentation. TJ Godati and Sergeant Azavito did a great job on their presentation, so, thank you.
Nothing more to add, thank you.
Sid?
Nothing more to add, thank you.
Councilmember Campion?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things real quick. I wasn't able to make the gang presentation, I got, my job switched my hours for the flood watch stuff that was going on last week, so I was down and out, but I have a question about, since that came up, about at some point could we get a report on our citywide emergency operation plan and what that looks like, and, and who was in charge of it, and all that kinda stuff?
Great topic, and we're working on bringing back to the council, probably in March, an update to, basically update our emergency operations plans, it is, it is out of date. We've recently walked through, and staff's doing their ICSC training, one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred. So we're starting kind of that process, and, you know, we are, something that, you know, should be in our strategic plan, I think, of, you know, kind of addressing, you know, more emergency operations, 'cause, you know, we do need to do the training and, and keep up with that. But you'll be seeing that here in March.
And the council is required to get at least the one hundred level training?
I believe so, and, and that's something that will, will kinda roll out and make sure the council-
And I know the safety committee, we were shown the ground zero where everything happens and all the equipment things, less than six months ago, I believe, by Sergeant Walton.
And then I just have one last thing. We had a student, actually a student athlete from Liberty Ranch High School, female wrestler. She's the first wrestler from the school to make state, and that's kind of a big deal. And so what I was wondering is, is, do we have anything in place to bring people in the community, whether they're kids or adults, that achieve something like that, bring them to the meeting and have them do the flag salute or, or something like that?
You know, we can invite them to-
I, I would love to, I think that's, I think it's something that we need to do, and, and again, not just with our young folks, but, you know, people, the local newspaper reports on people that have lived in the community that are, you know, achieving great things in their careers and things like that. But specifically, when I saw this, I thought, what a good opportunity to celebrate our youth here.
Discretion of the council, if you wanna do something and ask them to lead, lead the pledge for that meeting.
I usually add, do you wanna contact her, or do you want me to?
Oh, I don't, I don't, I don't know her, so-
Go ahead, I'll, I'll help her come to council.
I just saw it in the paper, I thought it was cool.
Donna, didn't we do something for, and I forget her name, the, the gold medalist?
Stephanie Brown-Trafton?
Yes. We, didn't we do something?
Well, we had a parade. At the community park, and we had a big party. It was huge.
I'm not suggesting a parade, but I just think it'd be a good-
No, I think there was a recognition at the council.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think that's important, and again, I think it brings, you know, I think it brings our, other pieces of our community that wouldn't normally come to city council here, so they're familiar, and if they have an issue, they can come. And so I just think it's a good opportunity to celebrate our, this young lady.
In the past, we've had some community character awards that, that has been done also, but-
Anyhow, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a couple things, actually, you made me think, that's a great idea, maybe we could talk about doing something where we have, like, a special guest come and do flag salute, just at the front of the meeting every time, like, we just pick either some notable person, a youth in the community that done something that month, or we can maybe, council can maybe nominate somebody to do that, and if we don't already have, like, you know, tonight we had our officer do it, but if we don't have somebody, I think it'd be great, 'cause, again, it gives like the family, hey, watch the city council meeting tonight, you know, our daughter's gonna be on there, people will wanna at least watch the first ten minutes of these boring meetings, you know.
Great idea, I would recommend that you guys rotate the councils, so be responsible for bringing somebody forward, so-
Just have me do it, and I'll, Lori, you were just-
We're saying we could pick each person we want to.
Oh, yeah, just tell me who you want.
So my other two things were, I wanna thank the chief for all your traffic enforcement you got going on. Here we got a, we got a motor officer now, or one in train, we got one going to motorcycle, right, soon, and-
Sergeant Walton is doing traffic part-time, we also have another officer that's been selected as a traffic officer. He's going to motor school, I think, next month, or I think, actually, it's this month. And then, but he's in pre-motor, motor school with the help of El Grove PD, and so he should be certified in a few months.
Well, I thank you for that, 'cause you know how much of an advocate I am about speeding and stuff, and having-
I've never heard you mention speeding at all, serious?
Yeah, but I've, I've literally had, I literally had someone come into cop shit the other day, and she said, I just got a ticket, I haven't had a ticket in years, and I go, really, and she goes, yeah, I was on McFarland, I got a ticket for X amount of going a certain speed. And, and I was like, well, it's too bad, you know, but, but McFarland is one of those streets, we've had a lot of people complain for a long, long time. And I've seen, actually, some of your officers pulling people over right in downtown for running the stop sign. I saw somebody get pulled over for rolling a stop sign, which is a, a big problem down there, so I'm, I'm happy to see it. You know, I know, I'm not sitting here, you know, I know people are saying, that are out there that are paying those fines, are mad at me right now for saying that, but, look, I mean, we wanna try to make our town safer, so, I mean, just slow it down out there.
So you're warning them?
On that topic, too, we also have day shift and swing shift doing directed enforcement at certain locations. That's where either we've had accidents or, or we've had complaints. So there's actually a lot of direct enforcement, just with patrol staff also, so-
Seen the radar trailer out, too, a couple times, so, yeah, so anyways, so I think that was it, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Sandu, welcome back.
No, my turn, thank you. I attended, I attended gang awareness presentation put in by Galt Police Department and High School District. There is a lot of things discussed on, on that day, and also discussed there a recent trend in a gang activity. And the only thing, I was a little bit disappointed, because they don't have that many attendees. I really like to ask the community or official, elected official to join this kind of awareness, but they, they make a big effort to bring that thing. The second thing, I also attended ribbon cutting, grand opening, there was a shop there, cell phone repair shop on the Twin City Road, so I attended that, thank you.
Thank you. I too, I attended the gang presentation at Galt High School Auditorium after I walked in on a Boy Scout meeting at the PD Community Room. Luckily, our town's small, and I made it on time, so thank you for putting that on. It was nice to, to hear what we've done. We don't have a huge gang problem, we wanna keep it that way, and that's our goal, and I think we're meeting that goal. So that's about all, if anybody else has anything, meeting adjourned.